Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of March 27, 2018 is now called to order. The time is 6:00 p.m. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we have been enjoying the Seahorse Corral from the Sanibel School. The Seahorse Corral is a relatively new ensemble founded last school year by their music director, Mr. Joey Ginbreko. Since the ensemble was founded, they have participated in a number of performances, including their school's annual Veterans Day assembly, ball and spring musical showcases, and Seahouse Corral spectacular show. Additionally, the Corral frequently performs around the Sanibel community. This past December, they were selected as the surprise entertainment for the Sanibel Rotary Club's annual holiday party at the sanctuary. Recently, the Seahorse Corral had the privilege of presenting a performance at Disney Springs and Walt Disney World, which was met with rave reviews. At this time, the Seahorse Corral will perform one more song, a Disney on Broadway melody. Corral for getting our meeting off to such a rousing start. Thank you. At this time, we'll take a brief recess to clear the performance area. ... advisory committee for the school board, along with the Cape Coral Youth Council as a youth councilman. He has been the class of 2019 freshman representative, class of 2019 sophomore president, and is now his key club president and fundraising chairman of Guardian Angels Youth Corps through Special Pops in Cape Coral. Jesus is very involved in his community by being in ASL club, key club, and history club. He plans on graduating high school and attending Florida State University, where he plans to major in meteorology, along with returning back to Cape Coral to become mayor, after which will lead him to becoming governor of Florida until he runs for president of the United States. After all of that, he plans on retirement. We would like to thank his parents and family for giving him the opportunity of his lifetime. He would like to thank his parents and family for giving him the opportunity of his lifetime to become a very successful person and to his school administration for allowing him to represent the school he loves most. Welcome, Jesus. Thank you. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, pledge of allegiance, one special presentation to the board, two recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include two resolutions, two items under executive services, three items under academic services, six items under business services, four items under human resources, five items under operations, as well as four superintendent's recommendations, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for this good cause item.
The reason for the good cause item is that we want to put together this collaborative agreement with the village of Sanibel, or excuse me, Astero. Sanibel just now. The village of Astero. And what we want to do is make sure that the parties are able to get together and begin work on this expeditiously, so it's important to bring this forward to the board this evening.
Thank you. As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. There is one item for public hearing and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher. Okay. Seconded by Mrs. Dr. Cuffel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Patrico will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. LaRiviere will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
I offer this invocation in support of many of our students who will begin FSA writing testing next week. God of wisdom, we thank you for the knowledge gained and the learning experiences of this school year. We come to you this day on behalf of our students and ask you to illuminate their minds and hearts. Let your spirit be with them as they prepare for exams, guiding their studies and giving them insight so that they can perform to the best of their ability. Please grant them strength to handle the pressure during these final days of the school year, confidence to feel secure in their knowledge, and the ability to keep an appropriate perspective through it all. Help them to keep in mind what is truly important even as they focus their time and energy on these tests in the immediate future. Finally, may they sense your peace in knowing that they applied themselves to the challenges of these days. Amen.
The cadet presenting the colors for tonight's pledge of allegiance will be introduced by Major Paulette Provost, senior army instructor at Cypress Lake High School. Major Provost served in the United States Army as a logistics officer on the Korean Peninsula, Europe, and the Middle East. She has been a JROTC instructor for 20 years in California and Lee County.
Thank you. Our national colors are presented tonight by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jen Yee Han Burgess, the battalion commander for the Panther Battalion. She is a junior with a grade point average of 4.84. Cadet Burgess has been a member of the JROTC Drill, Raider, and Academic Teams, as well as a member of the National Honor Society, Art National Honor Society, and the Swim, Soccer, and Lacrosse Team. Upon graduation, she plans to attend Duke University. Please join me in singing the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, school board members, Dr. Atkins and staff. I am thrilled to be here tonight to be able to present an outstanding award to one of your school board members. But before I do that, I want to congratulate each and every one of you of attaining the distinction of a master board. I was able to work with you as we went through this as a leadership development consultant for Florida School Boards Association. And at our December meeting, you were all given that honor of distinction, and I want to congratulate each and every one of you and also let your public know that you have earned that and worked hard to get it. But tonight, I want to talk about an award that we give to school board members. Being a school board member is a different job. Those of you that have come into it realize it's not like any other job that you hold in business or anything else. And no matter what walk of life from which you come in order to become a school board member, there is no mandatory training to find out how and what you're supposed to do in your job. So the fact that people go and do voluntary professional development, which we all value so much when it comes to our staff and our teachers and everyone else, for people to voluntarily go through that is going above and beyond. Now, your chairman, school board member Kathleen Morgan, has attained the certified board member. And in doing so, they have to do 96 hours, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but you've also maintained it by renewing it at 15 hours every night, every year, every night. Some days, it feels like that. Today, we're here to recognize Pam LaRiviera. Pam has gone, again, as I said, above and beyond to do 96 hours' worth of voluntary professional development in the areas of boardmanship, policy, finance, personnel and bargaining, advocacy, law, all of those areas, just to learn more about it so that she can better serve the students of Lee County. I almost said Pinellas. Of Lee County. And I want to, with great pleasure, present her with the certified board membership from Florida School Boards Association. Congratulations. And I also want to congratulate all of you.
And I would like to invite the following people to join me at the lectern. Marshall Bauer and Beverly Burke from the Foundation of Lee County Public Schools, as well as Richard Kudla and Brenda Steblo from the Voice of Constitution Cape Number 912, Inc. Also, I'd like the following Constitution essay contest finalists to come forward. They are Eva Lopez from Bonita Springs Middle Center for the Arts, Leila Ordinez Diplomat Middle School, Tobin Hertz Golf Middle School, Yasmin Muhtaba Lexington Middle School, and Kaylee Eccleson from Three Oaks Middle School. The Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, Inc., and the Lee County -- oh, I have these two. And the Lee County School District have partnered to support the teaching of the Constitution each year. Through their generosity, Cape 912 and private donors provided Constitution posters to all seventh-grade civics teachers to support classroom instruction in civics, history, and social studies classes. Students in these classes participated in an essay competition based on questions from information found in the United States Constitution. Each middle school selected their best essay to submit to the Foundation and Cape 912 for the competition. Mr. Kudla, President of Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, will announce the authors of the essays selected for third, second, and first place in the 2018 Constitution Essay Competition.
The third-place winner and recipient of a Kindle Fire is Yasmin Muhtaba of Lexington Middle School. Congratulations to you and your teacher, Kathleen Volpe. In second place, and also receiving a Kindle Fire, is Kaylee S. Eccleson of Three Oaks Middle School. Congratulations to you and your teachers, Travis McKeller and Suzanne Pollan. And last but not least, our first-place author's winning essay is titled, "How Did the English Bill of Rights, Magna Carta, and the Articles of Confederation Help Influence the U.S. Constitution?" Congratulations, Eva Lopez from Bonita Springs Middle Center. Andrew Carries.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Superintendent Atkins, and all of the members of the school board and all of the students that participated in the Constitution Essay Contest.
Have a copy of the Constitution.
As they're leaving, on March 3 of this year, the Florida High School Athletic Association, the FHSAA, held the 7A Girls' Basketball State Finals at the RP Funding Center in Lakeland, Florida. The 14-4 Chocowatchie Indians were pitted against the reigning state champions, the Green Wave of Fort Myers. This was the second time in two years that a team from Fort Walton Beach made it to the finals, and the second time in three years that the Indians faced the Green Wave. It didn't matter, because the Lady Green Wave defeated the Indians 65-41 to claim the Class 7A state championship for a second year in a row. Winning the 6A championship in 2016, the Lady Green Wave have completed a third consecutive state title, a three-peat, and have established Fort Myers Lady Green Wave as a basketball dynasty in the state of Florida. At this time, I would like to invite Coach Madison Barker, Jamie Outen, Taj Outen, Jordan St. Clair, and head coach Chad Terrell to join me at the lectern. I would also like to invite -- Coach, I'm going to give you the certificate. At this time, I would like to invite the three-peat champion Lady Green Waves, Bethany Brunson, Shania Clark, Michelle Echaveria, Tatum Hayes, DeStanny Henderson, Alexis Johnson, Elena Johnston, Ridley Ludlam, Janey Outen, Leila Roker, Giovanna Santos, and Samara Spence to join their coaches. Ladies and gentlemen, the three-peat Green Wave of Fort Myers, the ladies' basketball champions.
Everybody down here, players and coaches, please. Players and coaches, right in front.
In the middle, in the front. Guards in the front, centers and forwards in the back.
At this time, we'll take another brief recess, so those who wish to leave may do so.
School board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to me before the meeting began, you will be called in order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Morgan, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the meeting, during the board member comments section, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent to do so. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. Madam Chair, I have eight cards.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to address the board and has not filled out a blue card? Anyone on the left side? Please state your name.
James Martin.
James Martin. Or anyone else?
Ben Feldman.
No, you filled out a card, sir, and I have your card. I have his card.
Okay. All right. Very good. Is there anyone who hasn't filled out a card who wishes to address the board? Okay, Dr. -- Mr. Dodik, please.
Sure. Ben Feldman is the first speaker. Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate this. I am a guest teacher in the school system. That is not my profession. I'm a psychiatric social worker. I'm a psychotherapist by profession. I'm not in private practice now. But in the school system, I have seen some things. And as you all know, mental health is a big issue now. Of course, in my life, it's always been a big issue, my professional life. As a guest teacher, I have seen some things, and I have intervened, and I wonder if this cannot be done more regularly. You have to help me in that respect. Let me tell you a story. I was at Weaver Hips, you know where that is, and I was telling the behavior analyst about my background. And when she heard that, the next time I came, the next day, she had me meet three or four children in different classes, kids. And I want to tell you, one of these little boys, they have a lot of problems with anger. And he and I are talking in the classroom privately in a little place, and he's telling me how he feels when he gets angry, that he gets enraged from the bottom of his feet to the top of his head. Now, I knew this was a problem, obviously. And as I was talking to him, we had a nice conversation. I have worked with children, I've worked with adolescents, all kinds of things. After the conversation, I think we spoke for about 15, 20 minutes. They sent me to another child, same thing. Well, this child, had he had different problems handling his impulses and running around the classroom. In another class, I had a child, all of a sudden, I'm starting, he starts throwing a chair. Now, I should say, he was making a lot of comments, trying to get my attention, then he threw a chair. When I went up to him, we were speaking. When I went up to him, we were speaking, he calmed down, he sat in his chair, and he was completely different. He wanted my attention. That's why he did that. Then I met another child, a little girl, didn't want to talk to me at all. She took one look at me, she said, "Uh-oh." But we were able to sit together, and I could tell she was a very troubled kid. Here's why I'm talking about this. This behavior analyst had me speak with these kids individually, and I wasn't so sure, and you guys have to help me with this, that if some of these social workers and counselors are meeting like that, because I could see where I could talk to these children, gain this information. In fact, I talked to the teachers afterwards, helped the teachers in dealing with these kids, and then, of course, talking to the parents. That was something I saw myself doing, that I could help these kids, help you, help the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
I don't know.
Sir, your three minutes is expired.
Why?
You only have three minutes to speak, so you're... That's okay.
I beg your pardon?
That's okay.
So, I...
Your time's up, so...
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. The next speaker is George Fox.
You could put in writing what else you want to say. Now, I'm going to...
Thank you, Board. Up here again, about to have some sales tax. You're not getting enough going on out there, there's no buzz. I mentioned to a couple of Board members that I had seen that it would be a good idea to go ahead and get the ballot as written, as will be presented in November, out there in the public. Nobody knows exactly what it says, so therefore, anything that's said is somewhat speculative, because nobody knows exactly what it is you're asking for. I would highly recommend getting that out there for the debate to begin. I know there are efforts going on behind the scenes, but this is a public street fight, and you've got to get in the street, and you've got to keep raising and raising and raising the energy level, and get people talking about it, because the people who don't plan on voting for it may change their mind if they understand exactly what it says. Furthermore, there's more to it. You know, I've come to realize, after watching Mr. Rodriguez speak the other day, and I know a couple of you guys were there at BuPAC, this isn't about a sales tax, this is about the survival of the public school system. It is clear that it is the intention of the state legislature and the Republicans, the Libertarian Republicans, to eliminate public education and go to charter schools. And if you doubt that, then you are sitting around waiting for... It is going to happen, and this Board is established by the Constitution, not by the state legislature, and in my view, they have gone way past anything they should ever have done in public education. And you've got to fight, or they will shut you down, this building will be closed down. This year, the Constitutional Revision Committee is going to put forward language, it'll be very sneaky, it'll be written in such a sneaky way, that will allow them to basically close down public schools and do with public education money whatever they want. And that's to give it to charter schools, and you're trading a public education for corporate education, essentially. And you have to decide which one is better. There are pluses and advantages to everything, and I think the people out there in the public do not understand what the disadvantages of charter schools are. They're sold as some great... And they're beautiful buildings, you can make nice-looking buildings, but what's going on in there is no better than what happens in the public school system. In the end, that should be the number-one criteria. And you guys who are there, Ray Rodriguez could not answer the question, where is the evidence that charter schools outperform public schools? There is none. Or he would have said, they would be run up the flagpole if there was a shred of evidence. This is all ideological, and this is how you fight this sales tax initiative. And Superintendent, you go and do whatever you want to do. I mean, the Constitution grants this Board...
Yes. That's three minutes. You're welcome. The next speaker is Sharla Fox.
There you go, she can finish up.
Board Superintendent, Mr. Dotig, thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to address two things. Of course, I always come in support of the half-cent sales tax and in those I'm speaking with. What I wanted to talk about, though, was how our safety and security issues are now kind of supplanting that conversation, and we've got to be really careful that we don't let it totally take over that conversation. It is a matter of, we don't want the fire to burn down the building. So that's one of the things that we need to really be aware of as we go forward. The other is that I really wanted to commend the Superintendent on the safety training that he has out there, the hide-fight-flight training. It is an outstanding training, if you haven't seen it. Teachers have reacted very positively to it, and I just wanted to commend you for that, and see if we could maybe expand on it in some ways, I think would be a very positive, and let the public know a little more about that type of situation, I think would be very positive. And then let them know that also, in a real positive manner, what the legislature is putting in money for safety and security is a small, small amount compared to what we need. We are huge, people don't understand, they come from places that are small, little districts. We're talking 100,000 people here, okay, that you all deal with every day. And we've got to let them know that part of what the half-cent sales tax is to deal with safety and security for those students and the teachers, and that also translates outside the school district and the building. And so those are just some of the things that I've been hearing around the district, hearing from other teachers. Teachers, as you know, are, on the whole, reticent about coming and speaking. And so you see me up here so often, because as I've gotten older, I've gotten to the point where I've gotten over that, and so I'm more than happy to come and speak to you and try and be their voice, and let you know it's not just me, but what teachers out there are talking about and what we're hearing. Thank you so much for your consideration, have a good day.
The next speaker is Ray Troy.
Hello, my name is Ray Troy. I was here in the early part of last year, and to raise the question with what I think is a vast misuse of state money. I'd like to congratulate the Board for joining in a lawsuit with other Boards for action taken by the state governor. The Board was forced to give $86,760 in $890 in 1917, and in this year, the Board is going to be given $96,411 and $951 to be given to private schools or charter schools. This is a cost of two brand-new schools. Now you want to raise taxes to build new schools when you're giving money away, which is illegal. It is interesting, the students today on this Constitution. In civics, it is taught, no governor, no legislature can change the Constitution. Apparently, our state has. So I would like to have that noted. For the future... I'd like to understand that there's going to be a hearing on April 9th in front of a judge. Is that correct? And so I'd like you to publish it, so that the public knows what's going on. They're entitled to that. Every place I hear, all the lawyers and everybody knows about it, but the public doesn't know anything about it. Also, there is money collected by the tax cutter that is making money for the bank. This year, it's making $6,468,841.26 in commissions and postage. That should be deposited daily into your account, so you can make the money instead of giving it to the banks. I want to thank you for your time today, and you have a good day, and I wish you success in the hearing.
Thank you.
The next speaker is James Martin.
Listen, I'm going to talk quickly, okay? My name is James Martin, I'm a retired New York City police officer, did more than 20 years in the South Bronx and Harlem. I taught 6,000 recruits and the whole rest of the job, and we didn't have recruits. That includes all kinds of firearms trainings, heavy weapons, snipers, everybody. I'm here today to talk to you about solving the issues that we have with violence in schools. I've noticed that we have Lee County deputies now in Lee County working, which is wonderful. But we've taken these police officers off the street. It's simply stated, we know, these are undeniable matters of fact, you can't arm teachers, they don't want to be armed, they're not trained. My solution to this is that all of the police officers that I know are retired, are armed, we all are, we have to be. I dealt with the BLA, the Black Panthers, the AFALN, and they're still alive, and I'm still here, and they would not like to see me here. So, we are all trained. The two things that are prominent is, you put us in the schools, okay? We work the schools, we can work undercover, you can trust me as a maintenance man, you can trust me as a telephone repairman, it doesn't matter. Or you can just put me in the school, nobody has to know who I am. I'll give you a quick parallel to this. When we had issues with the planes being sabotaged and taken over, they put an air marshal on the plane. It worked because you didn't know who he was. That's how it stopped. You put us in the school, we're armed, we're trained, teachers aren't trained, police officers are trained. If you've done 20 years, you have this ability to look in someone's eyes, they act differently, they move differently, they talk differently, they react to questions differently. We have this inbred, after that many years of service, to look at a person and know, I need to talk to him, I need to have him open the bag, I need to address this. The plus in this is that we are already in the schools. All I need is a radio, salary, buy my lunch, I don't care, I can start tomorrow. But the police officers that I'm talking about are everywhere, in Boise Addo, in a small village in, I don't care, West Virginia. We're all there, we're everywhere, we're grandfathers, we're fathers, we have children in school, and we want to protect our children. I guarantee you that if we're in the school and I have a radio, I can terminate any action that takes place. All of us feel that in our heart, and all of us know that we can do that. All we need is the opportunity. Buy my lunch if you want to do something nice, okay? I'll eat with the kids, but I want to protect them. And this is the solution that I've known for years, I have not had the opportunity to get anyone to listen to me. If you put us in the schools, we can do the job for you, easily. If you've done it for 20 years, it's simple. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity.
Now you're... I don't know what the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Louis, and forgive me, I can't read your writing very well, is it Navarro? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board, Lou Navarro, retired Lee County school teacher, 40-year resident of Lee County, originally from Sarasota. Three minutes is not much time, so I keep coming back, but that's okay. I want to talk about gun control tonight. I agree with you, there should be no weapons in the schools except for the police. I wouldn't want to carry a weapon. I don't think that's a good idea, and for a change, we agree. I'm happy you're hiring more officers, but I want to see some changes. First, I'd like to see the resource officer at a podium, like the Lee County Courthouse does. I left you a picture there of the one in Cape Coral, and he is a Lee County deputy, he stepped out so I could take a picture, I didn't want his picture in there. At the entrance of the school, they can greet the children, that's fine. So look at that picture that I gave Susan, please. Now, you don't see... I know they have an office, but you don't see them enough outside walking. I think they need to walk more. And, you know, these guys are great, I'm not picking on them, but as a teacher, I have to walk up and down the aisles, even when I subbed. You just can't sit around anymore at a desk and etc. I'd like to see more of a visible presence of our police, instead of just a squad car out front, I think that doesn't act as much of a deterrent. I'd like to see you hire veterans to be security guards, give them military priority like the post office used to do. The guards I see are young, I don't know if there's any women, I want to be politically correct, and they don't instill a lot of confidence in me when I've dealt with them as a sub. I think you should welcome the Fort Myers Police Department, I hope we put away all those things I was reading in the news press. No metal detectors and put electronic doors at the side entrances, because we do know their weaknesses, and I'm sure the principals do. Free speech, I left you an article from the Sarasota Herald Tribune, my old high school was allowed to protest in Riverview in Sarasota, and they weren't discouraged like we were here. I think they learned more doing that than civics class. I quote Sarasota because you bring us a lot of comparisons when you want to raise the tax, or what you want to raise tax. Well, their starting pay went to $44,000, ours is at $40,000. Teacher shortage, Ms. Morgan, you addressed me two weeks ago. I offered you the 19-page report, you said you're well aware of it. Well, with the half-a-cent sales tax, you don't need it, because you're not going to be able to put teachers in these new schools.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
You're quite welcome.
The next speaker is Larry Rubel.
Good evening, Chairwoman Morgan, distinguished Board members, Superintendent Atkins, Mr. Dotig, our student representative, good evening to you all. My name's Larry Rubel, I'm a school psychologist employed by the school district, and I want to address something that the first speaker said, this is not what I came to address you about tonight, but I was a school psychologist originally in Lee County Schools from 1993 to the year 2000. When I left the district in 2000, we had 25 school psychologists and about 48,000 students, and we currently have over 90,000 students in our current allocation, and Dr. Atkins, this is not a criticism to you or Dr. Pruitt at all, our current allocation for school psychologists is for 30 school psychologists. We currently employ 26 school psychologists, and two of those are out on maternity leave. When I left the district, we had 30 school social workers, and we're now allocated 33 school social workers. So, yes, sir, we do try to address those student needs, but we're spread incredibly thin, and I know Dr. Atkins and Dr. Pruitt and Dr. Creel are committed to boosting up our student services, but we can't overcome that kind of a deficit overnight, and I understand that and appreciate that. I came to speak to you tonight to ask for a commitment to develop a resolution to prohibit school staff from carrying firearms under the Coach Aaron Freeze-Guardian Program section of HB 7026 that Governor Scott recently signed into law. Tonight, the School Board of Leon County is voting on a resolution aimed at prohibiting this, and I ask you to develop a similar resolution to bring back for a board vote at the April 10th meeting. April 20th is the 19th anniversary of the school shootings at Columbine High School. I ask that you show your support for school safety by developing a resolution and bringing it to a vote at the next meeting. We've seen the results of arming school staff and having more guns in school. Recently, there's been several accidental shootings at schools across the country, and I don't know how a... And I don't know how a trained firearm instructor has an accidental discharge pointing his gun at the ceiling, but that's what we've seen in California. We've seen a sheriff leave his loaded firearm in a school gym locker room and walk away from it without realizing he left it behind. More guns equal more shootings, period. I'm a veteran of the Air Force. I'm former law enforcement. I've had to carry guns in my past life, and it's not a good thing to do. So I please, I hope that you'll take this important step to protect our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Marvin Getz.
Good evening, Board of Education, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. I'm here today to talk to you about the training for all of our staff under the shooter training or whatever you wish to call it, whatever titling. I have been in since two schools, and both schools are training the staff. And one of them, the training will last about an hour and a half. It's next Wednesday. And the question I ask is, my substitutes, my guest teachers, are not being trained. We need to give them the same identical training, not just a piece of paper that you read for yourself as to what to do or how to do, but the actual physical training so that they can deal with the same issues if they ever come upon, and they'll know what procedures to follow. Since January, we have, not here, thank goodness, but we have lost six substitute teachers across the nation. They were in the wrong class at the wrong time, or they were taking a class and they ran into similar situation. So I just want to call your attention to it. We need to have identical training as a full-time staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getz. Let's see. Mr. Feldman. I'm going to ask Dr. Atkins to have someone...
Ms. Morgan, we still have two to call from the audience.
We do. No, we don't have any from the audience because they were on the list.
He spoke.
The two people who held up their hands had already turned in cards.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Feldman, I'm going to ask that Dr. Atkins have someone reach out to you and talk to you about your experience and see if you can give us some ideas. To be honest, we were having that conversation this afternoon in our briefing about how we form partnerships with community entities and people in the community to support our mental health effort in the schools. So we realize it's a community problem, and we feel the community needs to be part of the solution, so we welcome your thoughts. Thank you. Mr. Fox, I will pass on, there you are, I will pass on your comments to our colleagues. Charlotte, thank you. Mrs. Fox, thank you for your comments regarding staff reaction to the safety training. It's nice to hear from somebody on the ground, how it is being conducted and how it's being received. And believe me, the sales tax is not taking a second place. There were two conversations going on, and they are both robust. Mr. Troy, where is he? Oh, there you are. Court case you referred to, that is taking place April 4th, which I believe is a Tuesday or a Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday in Tallahassee.
Wednesday.
Wednesday in Tallahassee. A board member, some board members will be, from here, will be attending that meeting to represent the board.
But to the public, it's...
Yeah, it is. So you're welcome to come up, and if you would like more information, please contact the superintendent's office, and they'll be happy to provide you with the information. And thank you for your comments regarding the distribution and use of state funds. We appreciate your support. Mr. Martin. There he is. We had, I mentioned earlier, we had the conversation today. We had a presentation by our staff about our current safety and security protocol. The conversation will be ongoing. We had to take immediate steps in response to the law, but we recognize that this is not a simple problem, and it does not have a simple solution, and there will be ongoing conversations about how we will handle it in the school and the role of the community may play. Mr. Navarro, did he leave? There he is. So, yes, SROs greet students at either the bus stop entrance to school or the drop-off entrance to school, and they're there at the exits at the end of school. During school, they don't sit in their offices. You don't see them. You see their car out front, but they're walking the halls, and they're checking into classrooms. So I just want to assure you that they're not sitting. They are moving around, and they are watching, observing, doing assessments. And we did not tell the students no. We asked them for their own safety, given the differences in the school layouts across the district, to formulate a plan with their administration that would enable them to express their feelings, offer their comments. But the feeling of staff was, and the board concurred, that having students walk out en masse in an unprotected situation was not in the best interest of students. Mr. Rubel, where are you? Okay, we recognize, you know the need. We know the need. We did have a good conversation this afternoon about community partnerships and working with individuals in the community who have the skill set, the experience that we may be able to use. And Mr. Getz, I'm going to ask Dr. Atkins to have, where are you, have someone contact you about shooter training for our guest teachers. So thank you all for coming forward and speaking with us. We appreciate having your comments. Next is approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher.
I have no pulls this evening.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
I have none.
Mrs. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Mr. Toyber.
Ma'am.
Mrs. LaRiviere.
Ma'am.
Dr. Cuckle?
None.
And I have none. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. LaRiviere, seconded by Ms. Giavennelli. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Included in the approval of consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming April 2018 as National Autism Awareness Month as well as School Library Month. Dr. Atkins, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignments that were approved under the consent agenda?
Well, Madam Chair, we have four individuals. I think at least two of them I know are in the audience today. First is Leslie Jost, Curriculum and Instruction Innovation Elementary to Coordinator Curriculum and Staff Development Center. Richard Parfit, Safety and Security Director. Sarah Cox, Budget Department from Accountant Level One to Coordinator Business Services. Tracy Adams, Procurement Services from Coordinator to Administrative Coordinator, Procurement Services.
Congratulations to all of you. Next are superintendent's recommendations. First is Good Cause. Dr. Atkins, would you read your recommendation, please?
Yes, sir. First recommendation, I recommend board approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Village of Astero to provide for the development of a joint educational advocacy task force for the purpose of collaboratively identifying, prioritizing, planning, and implementing mutually shared and beneficial opportunities.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Ms. Patrica. Who said? Oh, Mrs. Giavennelli. Oh, no. I got Chris. Yeah. Oh, Fisher. I beg your pardon.
Okay.
Thank you both. Discussion. Well, seeing none from the, I will comment. Ms. Patrica has worked really, really, really hard with the new Village of Astero to create a partnership with that community focused on their interest in making certain that they have a quality educational product in Astero. And there are, we, for the most part, don't have working relationships with our political partners because we haven't found a common ground in which to work from. But I am really, really pleased with her work with Astero and staff, work with Astero council members and their staff to create this memorandum of understanding, and I hope it will become a template for our work with the Cape, Sanibel, Benita, Fort Myers, the other community, our other community partners as we go forward. So that's all I want to say. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Just wanted to also, on that same vein, recognize also Mr. Nick Batos for his role in putting all this together as well. So they've been a, they've been a great partner.
Yep.
Next item is, I recommend board approval of the estimated expenditure of $3,500,000 for the bid for paving projects throughout the district awarded to Bateman Contracting and pavement maintenance for the period of April 19th, 2018 through April 18th, 2019 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Moved by Dr. Cuckle.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Next, I recommend board approval of Piggyback Swanee County bid for type II-B panelized modular buildings awarded to Mobile Modular Management for the period of March 27th, 2018 through March 26th, 2019 at an estimated expenditure of $800,000 with an option to cancel deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Mrs. Fisher.
Support.
Mrs. LaRiviere, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to renew the bid for the installation only of air conditioning, many split and split systems on the as-needed basis for the Maintenance Services Department with Country Cooling and Heating, Inc., Nemeth Air Conditioning, Inc., Southwest Heating and Cooling, and Wentco, Inc. for the final renewal period of April 22nd, 2018 through April 21st, 2019 at an estimated expenditure of $600,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber, seconded by Dr. Cuckle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Atkins, would you please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item?
Yes, I recommend board approval to revise policy 4.36 bylaws of the Head Start, Early Head Start Policy Council to reflect the new federal requirements contained in the new Head Start Program Performance Standards. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, March 28th, 2018.
We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider approval to revise policy 4.36 bylaws of the Head Start, Early Head Start Policy Council. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. Time allowed for comments is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to address this item? Anyone on the left? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of March 27, 2018. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendation.
It's the recommendation, I recommend board approval to revise policy 4.36 bylaws of the Head Start, Early Head Start Policy Council to reflect the new federal requirements contained in the new Head Start Program Performance Standards. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, March 28th, 2018.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved. Second.
Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, time for board member comments. So I'll start with you, Jesus. What would you like to talk about tonight?
I just want to talk about, safety and security is always important.
Yeah.
And I think it's, you guys are doing a pretty good job. And I really enjoyed our meeting with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, and I think you guys are getting down to the students' aspects of it, and I just think it's really good. I know putting more resource officers now is getting to the right step. I know that even the other schools are doing their kindness clubs and doing stuff to help prevent stuff like that happened in Parkland never happen again. So honestly, it's been pretty good, and I know it comes with time and a place, you know, and it's been good. It's been good. So just, other than that, that's all I got.
Okay.
So thank you for having me here today. I also want to thank my principal, Ms. Jamie Cobert over there. She's an awesome person to work with, and I want to thank each and every one of you guys for doing an amazing job. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Well, thank you for being here, and I do appreciate your work on the student advisory. We found that to be a pretty powerful group when it comes to telling us what's happening on the ground with students. So thank you for your work also. Mrs. Fisher.
I have no comments, but I want to thank Jesus for being here, and of course, as usual, I want to thank our staff for their hard work every day, and welcome Mr. Parfit.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
I'll agree with her. Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Patrica.
Mrs. Rodriguez, we hear a lot in the news today about career politicians and how terrible they are, but if you fulfill all of your goals, mayor, governor, president, I'll vote for you for all of them. Because you're the kind of politician we need out there. So best of luck to you. If you ever need anything, let me know.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Toyber.
I have nothing.
Mrs. LaRiviere.
Just a thank you, Jesus, and prayers for you and your endeavors.
Appreciate it.
With regard to that, and otherwise, no comments.
Same for me.
Dr. Cuckle, and I have none. Mr. Dotig.
I have none. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins.
No comment other than to say that anybody who did speak, that if you would, please provide a number to, I think, Mr. Dotig. We usually do the pluses and deltas, so it takes my attention, but we would like to get follow-up with appropriate staff.
Okay.
Some of you, we know. Mr. Getz.
Okay.
Mr. Navarro. I think we have contact information.
Thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board, Tuesday, April 10th, there is a school board workshop at 2:00 p.m. as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Dr. Cuckle, seconded by Mr. Toyber. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries... This is like church. Everybody's getting, walking out.
We didn't even get to the...